Today, June 25th. I will ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Just one brief announcement. I have rearranged the agenda. Tonight, we will have, we are switching the Creekside project will be the number two item, and then Measure D will be last. And before we head into any public comment, I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners if you would like to make a motion to review the minutes for May 14, 2024, and to approve those minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, I did forget roll call.
It's okay. Let me just... Commissioner Hernandez?
I am present.
Commissioner Gorn?
Here.
Vice Chair Johannes?
Here.
Chair Gossett?
Here.
And Commissioner Ruddock is logging in via Zooms this evening. He was a bit ill, so he did not want to be present in person, so he is coming in shortly, so I will make sure that we announce when he's in here. He's just not here quite yet.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm in communication with Commissioner Ruddock. Can you send him?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, with that, we will look at the minutes for May 14, 2024.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those...
Can you do a roll call on that?
Yes. Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes, please.
Vice Chair Johannes?
Yes.
And Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0.
We will move on to the June 11, 2024 minutes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with these minutes or any amendments?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes, please.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Johannes?
Yes.
And Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Motion approved. And I am bringing Commissioner Ruddock in as we speak.
Thank you. And at this point, I will open it up to public comment for any item that is not on the agenda tonight. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the Planning Commission business. The project description is the notification of the Director's intent to approve a temporary use for the PUD zoning district. The location is 2 Miramonte's Point Road, and Akoie Wilson will present this project this evening.
And just before she gets started, I just want to make sure that Commissioner Ruddock can hear us and just do some protocol.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Commissioner Ruddock.
Yes, sorry to be late. The traffic was terrible.
My apologies, too, and thank you for the help. We just did roll call in the minutes, and we are now going to be starting the presentation.
Terrific.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and Planning Commissioners. So this item is an intent to improve a temporary use permit in the PUD zoning at the Half Moon Bay Golf Links, which is located on that 2 Miramonte's Point Road near the Ritz Carlton. This is an event that has been done annually since 2006, so this item has been approved annually since 2006, and the Director intends to improve this item again for 2024. There are no significant changes from years past, other than the removal of some flagpoles that were previously approved. So the event will consist of one large tent and two smaller tents to host a series of charitable events. It would be between the dates of July 23, 2024, and October 21, 2024, not to exceed 90 days. That's about it on that one. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions with my fellow commissioners? Akoie, you don't need any action from us, just accepting your report? Is that it?
Correct. We're just letting you know that we'll be approving this tomorrow.
Thank you, Akoie.
That's got to be a record.
So with that, we'll move on to our next item, Item 1B, which is the Coastal Development Permit Architectural Review and Setback Variants for New Residents and ADU. The location is 595 Creekside Court, Lot Number 10, and Scott's going to make our presentation.
Thank you, Chair Gossett, and members of the Planning Commission. As mentioned, this project includes a new residence and attached dwelling unit at 595 Creekside Court. And this, the subject property is on the corner of Church Street and Creekside Court, and is one of several houses within the residential development that was recently reviewed by the Planning Commission. Now, the subdivision improvements are currently under construction. The site itself is zoned commercial downtown, and the land use designation is also commercial downtown. Now, the project includes the construction of a 3,521-square-foot, two-story house that includes an attached ADU of 500 square feet. Now, the subdivision entitlements, the history on that is fairly extensive, and to summarize it, we created a sort of a separate document that was attached to the staff report, Attachment 4, that includes references to all the previous meetings. Now, in November of 2017, the Creekside subdivision was approved by the City Council, and the mitigated negative declaration was adopted. The current application was submitted in 2022, and, which included, you know, the other houses that were reviewed by the Architectural Advisory Committee, and then reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission last February, except for Lot 10. So the discussion tonight is really focused in on Lot 10, because that was not approved last February. Now, since February, modifications to the home have taken place. The applicant resubmitted prior to scheduling the Planning Commission hearing this evening. Permits requested include a coastal development permit, architectural review, and then a variance to encroach into the street-facing side setback five feet. Now, this slide gives an overall view of the Creekside development. The subject property is highlighted in blue. As you can see, it's on the corner of the new Creekside Court Street that's under construction currently, and then Church Street on the right. This slide shows the proposed site plan that's been updated since the Planning Commission previously reviewed all of the houses along Creekside Court. And then the floor plans. On the left, you have the first floor plan, and then second floor on the right. I've highlighted the attached accessory dwelling unit in blue. And then this slide shows the front elevation of the updated home. And notice the primary gable on the first floor there, which houses the ADU, is integrated nicely into the rest of the house. This slide shows the interior side, so the west elevation. And notice the front door on the right there for the attached ADU facing west. This slide shows the rear of the house, sort of on the Pillar Cidos Creek side, the north elevation. And then the most prominent side of the house, the east elevation that faces, that would face Church Street. This includes the, sort of the prominent entryway that's recessed into the side elevation, and this is really the, even though this is considered a street side, it is the prominent side to the new house. And then here we have a rendering, as seen from Creekside Court, showing the colors and materials. This is, again, the, sort of the prominent gable that houses the ADU, as well as the garage setback. So the primary items to go over, you know, sort of key points in the analysis include review by our Architectural Advisory Committee, substantial conformance with our residential design guidelines, compliance with our local coastal program, Measure D, and CEQA. Now, the AAC reviewed the house design on two different occasions. In January of 2023, the initial review, you know, quite a few comments and suggestions were given to the applicant. They went and updated the design of all the houses, including the one on Lot 10. Second round took place in July of that same year, and the Architectural Advisory Committee, they were supportive of all the designs after, sort of, you know, the changes that took place. Now, subtle changes have taken place to the new house on Lot 10 since the Planning Commission reviewed all the houses back in February. The house was narrowed to reduce the previously proposed 10-foot encroachment down to five feet. The front of the house was also pushed out to accommodate for a reasonable size ADU. Okay, so the primary design changes, like I said, included narrowing the house and then extending the front of the ADU out, and we feel that the design is in substantial conformance with what was reviewed by the AAC, as well as the design guidelines, including Guideline 317 and 320 related to building articulation. That can really be illustrated on the east elevation, where pushing out of the ADU actually provided some additional articulation of the building. And then also Guideline 2.1, which talks about conceptual setbacks in relation to the other houses along Creekside Court. Now, as far as zoning goes, as I mentioned earlier, a street-side setback variance is requested, and this would allow the new residents and attached ADU to encroach five feet into the required 15-foot street-facing side setback. Now, this would leave a 10-foot setback to the property line from the side of the new house, plus four feet of undeveloped right-of-way between the property line and the back of the sidewalk. And then the sidewalk would be another five feet, so at least on the corner, away from the bulbout from the cul-de-sac, there would be 19 feet from the edge of the building to the curb. Now, the findings can be supported, for one, because of the creek in the backyard creates a unique circumstance that's, you know, that's kind of the classic example of being able to make the findings for a variance when you have a creek in the backyard. The corner lot on a cul-de-sac is a unique scenario, where normally you see several houses between a corner and the end of a cul-de-sac. In this case, there's just one lot. It is a unique scenario. And then the uniqueness of having the undeveloped right-of-way between the property line and the curb. Normally, the side property line will coincide with the back of the sidewalk or the curb with an easement. In this case, we have some additional space there. So given the three unique scenarios, there is a unique circumstance that applies to the land that doesn't necessarily apply to other properties within the city. Now, just to give a better visual, this illustration shows where the property line is, or, excuse me, the setback line, sort of the most left vertical line. And then the dimension shows the distance that's encroaching on the bottom to the property line. Now, here we have the floor plans, and the red indicates the portion of the building that would encroach into this street-facing side setback. You'll notice that on the ground floor, there is some primary living space that's included with the encroachment. On the second floor, it's limited to the stairway. Now, the staff report did mention, you know, sort of some background history on the build, this concept of buildable area. When the subdivision was under review at the Planning Commission and City Council, the idea of a buildable area, sort of netting out the setbacks and the riparian buffer to show the area in which, you know, a new home could be constructed. This idea was conveyed to the applicant as a guide for designing the new houses, which he undertook. And sort of the site plan on the left shows, is a snapshot of, from one of the exhibits that was, you know, conveyed to the city and back to the applicant, as far as, you know, a guide on, you know, what to design the houses to. And you'll notice that it does call out a five-foot setback. Once the houses were fairly deep into the design process, it was discovered that this buildable area concept did not comply with the required setbacks. And this is part of the, you know, how we arrived on why the applicant is requesting a variance. The site plan on the right shows what's currently proposed, so this kind of gives you, you know, a compare and contrast. Now, as far as, you know, compliance with policies within our land use plan, the site is within the town center, and as I mentioned earlier, within the commercial downtown. Land use plan policies support increased density in the town center, which this certainly would do, certainly helps having an additional, you know, dwelling unit included with a single family. And then, as you probably noticed, story poles were installed, and this is primarily because of the variance that was requested. But the site is also within a visual resource corridor, Pillar Cidos Creek. Now, some questions came up as far as Measure D. The site was granted to Measure D allocations back in 2022, and the allocations are still valid since the applicant has been diligently working towards the required permits for construction of the new houses. That year, we did not exceed the allocations, request for allocations that were available downtown. Therefore, we didn't have to get into the evaluating the checklist for downtown. So in this case, we just issued the Measure Ds because we didn't exceed the allocations available. Now, the project complies with the requirements of the previously adopted initial study and mitigated negative declaration associated with the Creekside subdivision. Therefore, the project is in compliance with CEQA. And the noticing required for a variance did take place. We posted the site. Mailings were sent out to all the neighbors within 300 feet, as well as property owners. We also published a legal notice in the Daily Journal, advertising the requested variances, variance, and no comments were received. I didn't receive any inquiries on this proposal. Now, we do recommend approval of this, if, you know, as long as the Planning Commission's able to make the findings. And if, for some reason, you know, if you aren't comfortable with the findings, we also prepared a draft resolution for denial. That's certainly one option as well. Or modifying any of the conditions of approval or adding conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. The applicant, Gabe Gonzalez, is also here, and his architect, I think, is available via Zoom, so...
Thank you. At this point, I'll ask the applicant if you would like to speak. We usually give you an opportunity before we go into clarifying questions.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. After our last meeting, we immediately consulted with Arborist Cody Kleinheinz, where he verified all of our trees were in fair condition, none were deemed to be removed, and none of the root system... the root systems had been damaged by construction activities. He also made recommendations for the cleanup of all the trees, which has been done. In addition to our Arborist consultation, we have also continued regular, weekly monitoring by our project biologists, which has supervised and monitored our tree protection fencing, our exclusionary fencing along the riparian line, and all activities associated with the trees and the brushes. In regards to 595 Creekside Court, which is labeled as Lot 10, we did redesign the home to stay compatible with the rest of the homes in the development and the neighborhood while keeping the attached one-bedroom ADU in the design. We brought the home slightly forward in the front right corner and reduced the design by an overall five feet on the entire east side of the home. This also reduced the ridge height from 86.7 to 86.16, which is about eight inches. The new design increased the ADU by about 60 square feet but reduced the overall square footage of the entire home. At this point, the entire design collaborates harmoniously with the other homes in the development and neighborhood while supplying the city an additional housing unit with the attached ADU. This home does require a five-foot variance at the eastern side of the property in order to support a design that consists of an accessory dwelling unit, as well as to stay consistent with the symmetry and proportion of the rest of the development and neighborhood. Without the variance, this home is reduced to an overall width of 30 feet and would eliminate the ADU from the design and the community. Please consider our request for the five-foot variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, if we need you to come back, we'll let you know. Okay, thank you. At this point, I'm going to ask Commissioner Gorn if you have any clarifying questions.
So, um, so I used to know this at the, when we did this back in February, but how many lots are there altogether? Scott, do you know? Is it 11 or 12? 13 a lot?
Yes, so there are 12, single-family, and then there's one, fourplex.
Okay. So, a lot of lots. So, I also understand that the the lines drawn by the Coastal Commission were were very distinct and that we couldn't go out of those lines. So I guess I wondered, with all of that, all of those lots, I see, I don't really understand why the design of all of those homes was built out five feet farther than it's supposed to be, 10 feet farther than it's supposed to be. So, um, my question really is the same as it was on February 13th? Why is a variance necessary? I understand why you want a variance, but I don't understand why it's necessary. If what we're talking about is compatibility with the other homes, we have a lot of land over here, and the homes can be designed, could have been designed, you know, so that we didn't go over that line that we're not supposed to go over. So, why is it necessary? Don't understand.
Madam Chair, if you, if I could just clarify, I'm, it's actually 11, single-family houses. Three of them have attached ADUs, and one of them has proposed, and then one multifamily that includes four units, so.
Thank you for that clarification. So I guess, Commissioner Riddick, do we want to get an answer to that question before we?
But it's up to you.
So the question, just so I understand, is, you know, why is, why is the variance necessary?
Yes.
So, and I, I think that's, you know, that's, you know, we may want to ask the architect for support on this, but I, you know, I think there is the compatibility concern that, you know, going with a house without the five-foot variance, then, you know, there, there could be some compatibility concerns with the rest of the houses that were approved back in February, so.
Thank you.
Can I get a shot at answering that question?
Not yet. We'll call you up when we need you, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I think we'll move on to Commissioner Riddick and.
Yes, so since this was a last minute, or not last minute, but this afternoon, Commissioner Riddick informed us that he would not be here, there's a couple of legal formalities that we need to do that was supposed to be at the very beginning, but as you know, we just came, started running right, right away, so. Commissioner Riddick is ill and is remote, so I just want to acknowledge that you can hear us clearly so far?
Yes, I hear you very well.
And Commissioners, can you hear your fellow Commissioner clearly?
Yes.
Okay. We know that you don't have agenda posted as well as other things, just because it's, this is a, one of a last-minute thing that can happen. So we just need to disclose as, let's see, we just need to ask the question of whether any individuals 18 years of age or older are present in the room with you at this remote location.
No, only my cat.
Okay, and the member that is Commissioner Riddick is to participate both by audio and visual, so I do see that he's here, and he can turn his camera on, we can see him. I believe he has the capability.
It says the host has stopped it, Bridget.
Of course. I will work on his video. I don't know why it's not letting him. It usually has a drop-down to let him.
Sorry for all the trouble.
It's okay. It's, um, all this updated stuff on here, so. Okay, we will work through that, but Commissioner Riddick is here, and he can hear us, and he has no one in the room besides its cat, so we can continue.
So we can't see the cat?
Okay, and since we have Commissioner Riddick on, I was going to ask you, Commissioner Riddick, if you have any clarifying questions.
Well, I do have one. Scott, thank you for the report. Just to be sure that I understand it correctly, Lot 10 with the requested variance, the east side of that house would be 10 feet west of its property line, and from the property line to the, to Church Street would be another nine feet, is that right?
Yes, that's correct, along the corner. Now, as you go further north, the the cul-de-sac bulbs in, and the distance is closer to the property line, but, you know, roughly 40, 40 feet in, yeah, it's 19 feet from the the edge of the curb.
Yeah, I, I see the bulbing. I don't suppose you know what the minimum distance from the house to Church Street would be with the variance? At its closest point?
So I would estimate probably around 13 or 14 feet.
Yeah, if that, if that's to scale, that makes sense. Okay, thank you for that. I don't have any other questions right now.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Hey, Scott, great presentation. The, I think I have this right, the floor area ratio is about 22%? So this is like a 16,000-square-foot lot, and it's got about 3,500 square feet of coverage?
Let's, so, well, the lot coverage is 16%.
16%.
As proposed. Yes, the floor area is is slightly higher, so it's, it's.
Coverage, sorry.
Yeah, about 22%.
And how much of the lot is unusable because of its proximity to the riparian corridor? Approximately?
So it's, it's more, more than half is eliminated from the, you know, the creek and the associated buffer. So I would say, you know, roughly 6,000 square, 5,000 or 6,000 square feet is available for development.
And this project, not only during, this project during construction has a plan to protect the riparian area as well as a long-term plan to keep development out of the riparian corridor, is that correct?
Yes.
And is that a condition of approval, the restriction?
Correct, and it's actually within the mitigation measures that, you know, biologist is out there on a regular basis, monitoring the, the construction activity, so.
And in the original design, there was a, I'm going to say this in a way that may be impolitic, or, so I'll ask you to correct me if I get it wrong, but there was a misunderstanding around where the border of the property should be that was conveyed to the developer when they were buying the property and designing the property. Is that fair?
Yes, that's, that's accurate.
Okay, and so the, and the division of the property happened with that error uncorrected by any of the parties, is that correct?
Yes.
And the design also happened after this honest mistake was made?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Joannis?
So what was this honest mistake that was made? If you could please explain?
Yes, so during the review of the subdivision, and I, you know, I created this slide to sort of illustrate what, what took place. The, the site plan on the left is a snapshot from the buildable area exhibit that was created, and I can forward this through the, the chair to show the, as an illustration to, you know, get a sense of the, the buildable area that would be created by the, the lots. And as you can see on Lot 10, a five-foot setback is called out on this buildable area. And when our, when the applicant was considering purchasing the land, this was conveyed to them on, you know, just to get a sense of, you know, where the houses could be built. The design started, and he worked with city staff, and it wasn't until later on that it was discovered that there was, there was an error with setbacks, that this, lo and behold, it was, it's actually a 15-foot street-facing side setback and not a five-foot side yard setback. So there, you know, the, the honest mistake, as Commissioner Hernandez referenced, was explained to the applicant, and, and then the decision was made, given the unique circumstances of the, of the site, to move forward with the requested variance that the, that the planning commission reviewed last February. Now, since then, he's redesigned the house to reduce the encroachment down to five feet as opposed to 10 feet last February. And so that's, this is part of the, sort of, the, the story that's taken place, so.
So I have a question. So because of this honest mistake, did, did this make the lot unbuildable or unusable, or did it create a hardship?
No, the, it, it's still a legal lot, so, you know, capable of being built on, and, you know, I think it was, I guess, the latter of, of your examples that it, you know, created a bit of a hardship for our applicant, so.
So in what respect is it a hardship? Is it, is it a financial hardship? What, what is this hardship?
Yeah, additional design work that's had to take place because of the, sort of, the misinformation on the buildable area map that was discussed, so.
And going back to the measure, I, I understand that you had enough Measure Ds to give out during that year. Had the city known that this was, would have been a, a variance that would be needed, had they not been, and this is a hypothetical question, had they not been enough Measure Ds to give out, would this lot have qualified, or would the entire project have qualified?
So, very hypothetical question, I, I think, you know, the hypothetical answer is that, given that this is downtown and there are twice as many Measure D allocations typically available, then he probably would have gotten a Measure D even if he had not checked the box on the, the checklist for no variances or exceptions, so.
And with regard to compatible, I mean, it, all that means that it, it doesn't, it doesn't match the others, not that it's, it's not a compatible use, or it's, it's not necessarily incompatible, because it's a house, it's just a smaller house, right? And if it got smaller, because compatible is just another word, when I hear compatible, it means it, it doesn't fit a certain standard, but it fits all the standards. I mean, it's a house, it, it's build, it's livable. It seems like, it just seems that the, this site is buildable, and the site can be used, and it's a beautiful site, it's a beautiful home. I'm just concerned about not understanding what the issue is with regard to the needed variance, because my understanding is if a variance is necessary, it is because the lot is a hardship, it's a non-buildable lot, and I could understand all of this, and this, these lots are all buildable. So I'm just, I'm just having a little bit of trouble wrapping my head around, okay, what is necessarily the hardship? And, you know, I, I'm not sure exactly with this honest mistake, was it a mistake in conveying information, or was this mistake in the, so was this mistake, did this mistake happen at the subdivision? So did this go to the Coastal Commission for the subdivision? Where, where did this mistake happen, when?
So, and we've, we've spent quite a bit of time going through city records, just, you know, diving into the background on this buildable area exhibit that Commissioner Gorn is looking at currently. And it was never approved by, you know, at a public hearing, it wasn't part of any, you know, tentative or final subdivision map, or, you know, associated pages. It was more, it was an exhibit that was conveyed to city staff, and, you know, it's, it was, you know, it was attached, I think it was attached to a staff report at some point, but it was never part of the approval documents. So it was more of a supportive document that was ultimately conveyed to our applicant just to give him a sense of, you know, the, the footprints that could be designed, and which, you know, in all honesty, we probably, you know, should have taken a closer look at the setbacks and, you know, flagged that this did not coincide with the required setback.
Thank you.
Please, go ahead.
Through the chair, I just have one more, just a clarifying question. So the, on this map, the, with all the lots, the Lot 10 is 2570 square feet, right, with this five-foot side setback? And so they're actually proposing, are they proposing a five-foot side setback? Is that what they're proposing?
No, they are.
A 10-foot setback?
No, they are not. So, so, and what I tried to do on this, the slide here on the, on the presentation was to show the, the proposed site plan. was to show the proposed site plan.
Right.
And notice that there's a 10-foot setback.
Right.
Whereas the buildable area on the left shows a five-foot setback. So they, they're basically meeting it somewhere in between. Required 15-foot street-facing side setback, which, you know, the map on the left doesn't comply with.
So I don't, so the map on the right, just how much square footage is that? Like, on the, on the map on the left, it's very clearly 2,570, right? That's the old one, 2,570. And this new one, I don't know how big that is.
It's roughly the same.
Roughly the same?
Yeah, yes, that's correct. And the reason I say that is because the front yard setback is actually measured from the center of the street. So we have a 20-foot front yard setback that essentially goes to the edge of sidewalk, so.
So they still have a 2,570 square foot lot?
Yes, correct. Buildable area, so, yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I'm going to step back for a second. What zoning district is this?
So the site is within the commercial downtown zoning district, and within the zoning code for single-family, the R1 development standards are referenced. So the R1 standards apply for single-family.
And there's a fourplex in the property as well, and what standard is applied there?
The R3 standards, so.
So if the applicant had chosen to build a duplex instead of a JDU, the R2 standard would apply, or the R3 standard would apply, arguably?
Yes, that's correct, which is a reduced street-side setback.
So if they would have just called this a duplex instead of a JDU, would that change anything?
Yes, it would, actually. It would, this wouldn't, let's see, I would have to look it up, but I think it's, I think it would meet the street-side setback.
Because it's 10 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So, good catch. So if they do call this a duplex, what is the definition of a duplex? Does it have to be separate, like two ADUs, or does it have to be a compound? What does that look like?
The development standards are slightly different, primarily with the parking. So for, I believe, for a duplex, it's four parking spaces, so.
Would it be fair, and I don't know if you can answer this question, or if this is one for Winter or the applicant, but I'd like to just pose the question, if the applicant has taken a loan on the value of their entire, of this particular property, with the expectation that they had certain development rights, and those development rights have changed such that they can no longer build a JDU, which is what I've heard, does that represent a hardship, in your opinion or the city's opinion?
Yeah, you know, at least the direction I've been given, you know, we wouldn't necessarily take into consideration the financial aspect of a project. So, you know, maybe Winter can weigh in on that, so.
I think really the question of hardship is one for the planning commission. The code, when it talks about variances, basically says you may grant a variance if it won't be contrary to the intent of the zoning code, nor to the public interest, safety, health, and welfare. Where due to special considerations or exceptional characteristics of the property or its location or surroundings, a literal enforcement of this title would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship. So I think there's room for the commission to make findings on those, and it's primarily a factual decision.
Thank you.
I have no questions, since you asked most of the questions I would have asked, so. Lucky me. So do we want to start with a deliberation, or, and I would ask Commissioner Gorn to go first?
Well.
Do we want to do a public comment?
Oh, yeah, public comment.
Yes, but no one filled out any cards, so I don't know, but I will open up public comment before we go into deliberation. I'm sorry about that.
I don't have anyone in line.
Okay, so we'll close public comment for this item and go into deliberation with Commissioner Gorn.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I thought that that was really good, that the applicants quickly interacted with arborists, because that was, there were many concerns at that February meeting. And so that, actually, that's terrific. I think that this, I don't, you know, personally don't see a need for variance. I think that this, if what we're really talking about is compatibility with other homes, with all the other homes, I mean, if we're just looking at the square footage of the lots, that's not the fourplex, I have to put on glasses, sorry. It's 2,080 for Lot 2, 2,580 for 3, 2,020 for 4, 1720, 1640, 1630, 2,300, and then there's a big one on 9, which is 2,800. But this is 2,570. I just don't see how this is so incompatible, even, I mean, in the first place, the whole thing could have been designed with the, you know, you knew where the line was, right? You knew where the line was at the start, and we, so these, all of these could have been designed or redesigned or whatever to take that into consideration. I guess this, you just always depended on there being a variance. Making it compatible with other homes, to me, just doesn't seem like an issue at all. Like, I just don't see it. I see, I see smaller lots, and smaller houses, and all the other lots except for the one next to it. And I just, I'm unconvinced. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Riddick?
Thank you, Chair. Could I start by asking the applicant a question?
Sure.
The applicant has stated in his letter and tonight orally that without the variance, the attached ADU is impossible. But I don't, I don't believe that that's physically impossibly true, and I'd like to just hear a little bit more about his reasoning as why the ADU necessarily would be lost without the variance.
Hello, Commissioner Riddick. So when, when we first designed the first draft, we, we did respect the lines, and the lines, we designed within the lines that had the approved original building envelope, so that we took all the approved original building envelopes, and we designed the homes all within those lines. We never exceeded, and right now, we're actually behind it. But that was brought to us once we were all drafted with all of the plans ready to submit, and it was brought to us that at that point, at that point, after we wrote the check, after we were eight, 10 months into the project, was when they told us, you got to go back 15 feet. Okay, that's, to start with, that's, and we did want to design the ADU in as many of these as possible because of the housing crisis, okay? So now, with this information, we did request a 10-foot variance last meeting, and it wasn't going to happen. We compromised. And there is a financial hardship here, besides other hardships, with time, interest rates, the way interest rates are now, and all this extra time of delay that we've had to endure, that's a humongous, unimaginable hardship that you don't know unless you're writing the check. So coming back to, to your question, how would we be able to not design a home? If we design a home that's 30 feet wide with an ADU, we will end up with a 1,400 square foot home and a 450 square foot ADU. And Commissioner Hernandez, thank you for bringing it up in so, such a sophisticated way, but yes, we are under a microscope right now with our bank, with our partners, on what the hell is going on, and why can we, why do we have to reduce those? That affects our numbers. We can't, this was one of the larger homes, and now it's going to be the smallest. And that one, yeah, it's not going to pencil out. We can't design 1,500 square feet with an ADU. It'll be a lose-lose on that one. So you probably could design it, but it will drastically affect the outcome of that design. It'll, it's supposed to be the most, it's supposed to be the most beautiful home as you enter the subdivision, and it will not be, because of, because if we do design an ADU with it, it just, it will be very complicated, and I don't think it will, it will, it will match the other homes. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, thank you for that. I understand that. And I think, sir, you deserve, you deserve, thanks for soldiering on and the difficulties of that, of the project with the shifting lines and such. I, to be frank, I'm kind of on the fence about this. None of us likes variances without good reasons. As Commissioner Hernandez just pointed out, part of this may be semantics. I mean, if it was a duplex, we might require a different setback. Scott's presentation showed that for most of the eastern side of that property, there is a nine-foot sidewalk and right-of-way between the property line and the street, which, which has the effect of a larger setback. But I'm, but I'm also not certain that, you know, desire to make the house similar to the other houses in the subdivision constitutes a reason for a, for a variance. So I'll just stop there for now and listen with open ears to my peers.
Thank you, Commissioner Riddick. Commissioner Hernandez?
How many units of housing are affordable units of housing? If I can ask that question, I just, I actually, Scott?
Yes, so the multifamily unit on Lot 1 includes four deed-restricted affordable housing units, and, which is required to be built first.
And there are 11 other units of housing?
Yes, now three of them have attached ADUs, including the one reviewing, the planning commission's reviewing tonight.
So more than 10% of the properties, more than 10% of the housing units are affordable?
Yes.
Are any of them very low income, or they're just low income? Or, sorry, I always get mixed up on the designations here.
I'd have to look it up, but I, as I remember, one of the units is very low and the rest are low. I think, I think that's.
Okay, so there's one very low unit there? Okay, so at least 5% of the total units of housing are very low income?
Yes.
Okay, low, okay, so.
Yeah, low, so.
So one could make an argument that state density bonus law could apply to this whole project as well. Couldn't one?
Yes.
Okay, and if that was the case, then the setback wouldn't be an issue, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
And also, just to clarify, I did look up the zoning code, and both R3 and R2 contain a 10-foot street-facing side setback.
Great, thank you. I don't like it when projects come to us out of the blue and ask for an exception or a variance, and it's not like some super compelling reason. In this case, I do think there is a special consideration, for sure, that we should take into account, which is, the project was entered into with an understanding that was conveyed. Now, it's not necess, it's not, because the mistake was made and paperwork that was found before the project was approved, that's not, I'm not going to assign specific responsibility to it, but I think it's a legitimate issue, and it is a special consideration that we could take into account. I also think that in this particular lot, at this particular location, that's, you know, in the same parking, or nearly in the same parking lot as 555 Kelly, it's, it is an issue of semantics, that don't matter, because the practical effect is there's a 19-foot setback for most of it, and there's a bold build-out at the end, where there's only one house on the cul-de-sac. It doesn't have a material impact on the visual corridor, and the lot is designed in a way that protects natural resources in the Riperian corridor. So I, I really, I don't see, given all of that, I don't see an issue at all with a variance on this project. Moreover, again, it's not our job to make sure a project pencils out, and it's not our job to make sure that due diligence has been followed on a project when somebody buys a piece of property. I've certainly been through that myself. But I do think, I do buy the argument about, look, this is a gateway into the community, it's a very prominent location, it's designed to set the aesthetic. A design and a subdivision was made with the intention of having this be a keystone part of the property that conveyed the overall style and design of the neighborhood, and conveyed the value, and maybe one could argue the glamour of this particular neighborhood. So I, I think this is, in the history of variances, we've granted this would be a very minor variance. And I also appreciate two key facts that the applicant has brought to our attention. One, they did what we asked them to do with the trees. They made sure that the trees were good, they got an arborist's report, they've worked with the city in good faith on those trees, and they've come up with a coherent plan and executed it to protect them, which also protects the visual resources in the area. The second thing is that the applicant hasn't just told us to stuff it, they've actually literally met us halfway with the setback, and they've come up with a design that does provide compromise. So I'm a very strong and ardent supporter of granting the variance and approving this project, and I also find the style aesthetically pleasing and agree with the Architectural Review Committee's findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Joannis?
I don't have any specific questions or discussion. I just want to make sure that we all understand it's not about the entire project. This is about a lot on an entire subdivision. So I just want to bring that to your clarification, because this is not 555 Kelly, and it's not, you know, one subdivision. It is a lot in a subdivision. And if this is considered a high-density project, then, you know, we should call it that. But it's not. So I just want to make sure that we're very clear on that.
I don't really have much to say, other than I'm not understanding the true hardship for the variance. Typically, when we look at variances, there might be some factor that can't be mitigated, but I'm not seeing that. So, that's my basic comment. And since you did bring the trees up, I had no desire to talk about the trees tonight, but I walked the site again, and the photos that, and I appreciate that the hanging branches had been removed, but the, I didn't see anything that was done to protect the root base of the trees as compared to when I walked the site in February. So, I don't understand what's been done to further protect the trees as required in the original condition of approval in the subdivision. So, I just wanted to point that out. I couldn't see what had been done to protect the root base, given that the waddles, the straw waddles that were down at the site hadn't been moved at all. And they, in some instances, they look like they might be growing into the root system. So, anyway, I, like I said, I didn't want to bring that up, but since you brought it up, I just opened the door for that discussion. But anyway, that is basically, those are my comments, and thank you.
I just wanted to, through the chair, just can, could follow up on Commissioner Johannes's comment. I do agree, this is a single project on a single lot, and the applicant specifically separated this from the rest of the project so they could move forward with it. That said, I think, again, as part of the special consideration, we should look at the, we should look at this as a whole, and we should think about how we got to this point. I think it's completely appropriate to take that into consideration. And, you know, the applicant could have done a lot of different things with this property if they had so chosen to, that would be more impactful from a total footprint perspective. So, and they could come back to us with an even bigger project on this site and apply state density bonus law, they could make an argument for that. I don't think we need to go there, I don't think the applicant's arguing for any of that, I'm putting a hypothetical out here, I just, I think that I've seen us grant variances over much more minor issues, and I do view this as a hardship for the applicant, in my view. I think it's not because of, like, oh, you've got this huge lot, you're building a huge house, it's, they walked into a financial decision, they could have made a little bit better due diligence, arguably, but they walked into this and made a financial decision based on information that was conveyed to them, and so, they're kind, and they've also, they already separated the lots. If they would have known this upfront, they could have done a subdivision to the lots differently. And I think that's, that's the other point I would make, is that, like, they would have had to put their entire project on hold and do another subdivision and come back to us and redesign everything. So, I, I think that there is a legitimate argument to be made for that.
So, if we're looking at this project as a whole, this honest mistake was made in 2020, this is four years ago. So, if you wanted to make a change to your lots and make one lot slightly bigger and make one lot slightly smaller, and move things over a little bit to accommodate the street-side requirement and not request a variance, you could do that. You could have done it four years ago, could have done it a long time ago, because there's a lot of room there, and this is a really big house on, among a lot of really big houses. And I think, actually, the planning commission bent over backwards to approve this plan in the first place. Like, we, we were, we let a lot of things go because we're looking at the project as a whole, but our requirement, what we asked them to do was to meet the street-side setback. That's what we asked them to do, and to come back and say, well, how about half? You know, that's fine if it's, like, if the variance is, you know, is necessary, but it's just not. So, I mean, it's just not.
I mean, again, it's a 19-foot setback. I mean, there's no practical benefit, and it's, you know, the effect is, it's effectively a 19-foot setback for the most part, and I, I guess I would say I strongly disagree. I do agree that we asked them to come back with a modified project. I did not say it has to be a certain distance, we just, I think, we're not going to approve the project, the whole project at that time, and we asked them to come back with a new design, that's certainly my recollection, and so...
So, in the staff report, it says, "Meet the street-side setback."
Yeah, but I didn't, we didn't...
That's what we said to them, and that's what staff says in its staff report. Like, that's, that's what we asked for.
I didn't say that, and I didn't, yeah, I mean, that wasn't my opinion at that point in time.
Thank you. So, do we want to entertain a resolution? Are we done discussing this?
I'm done discussing. I'd like to make a motion to approve the project before us, with the variance in the staff report.
Commissioner Riddick has his hand up.
I'd like to second it.
Roll call. Is that what she was saying?
Roll call, please, Bridget.
Yes, I will. Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorn?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Johannes?
No.
And Chair Gossett?
No.
Motion denied.
I think we need, you need to make a motion to deny the project.
Exactly, I'm...
Your motion.
So, I don't have that resolution in front of us, I know...
It's, she doesn't have it, probably, I know.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the coastal development permit, architectural review, and setback variance to allow the construction of a new two-story, single-family residence and attached accessory dwelling units at 595 Creekside Court in the commercial downtown zoning district and the commercial, and the commercial general land use designation.
Can I ask a question? So, does, if we...
Wait, we need a second on that motion, I think, before we go into discussion.
I just want to ask a question about it.
Oh, okay.
So, does this allow the applicant to come back to us with a design that includes the variance, without the variance? Scott, or legal, or whatever, I don't know.
So, if, if the planning commission approves the resolution for denial, then there's a 10 working day appeal period in which the applicant could appeal the decision to the city council?
I guess the question is, that I think Commissioner Gorn is asking, is if we have a majority that approves the denial, does the applicant have to start the whole application process over again from scratch? Or can they take the existing, can they use their existing project and come back to us, their existing plan and come back to us?
What, if, if an application for appeal is filed, then that would be a decision by our city council on the, on appeal. Now, if there is, if, if no appeal is filed, then the planning, planning commission's decision would be final, and, yeah, he would need to resubmit and, and try again, basically, so...
And pay all the other fees and things like that, they'd have to go, okay.
So, is there, is there a way to have a motion that allows him to redesign this house the right way and come back the way it was originally asked for? Or shall we just, or are we just supposed to deny? I actually don't know the answer to this.
In that case, we would recommend a continuance, probably, you know, with firm direction on, to the applicant on what to do, so...
Through the chair.
Yes.
Can I make a request that we get a second for the motion and then ask the applicant their opinion on what they would like us to do?
So, just to be clear, so I understand, so that I get it, sorry, but what Scott just said is that we can ask for a continuance to a date uncertain, I guess, is what we're talking about, so that the applicant can come back to us with a project that doesn't ask for that variance.
Okay, so, I just want to know, if you guys want me to withdraw my motion, I will, and then you guys can keep discussion, discussing it, so if you want me to withdraw my motion, I can. So, I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
So, we have a seconded motion, we can keep the discussion going, we don't have to vote on it yet, but it's just, I think it's a matter of protocol, it's okay. It's already withdrawn, though.
It's withdrawn, and if we want to reintroduce it, it can be reintroduced. So, yeah, that's a good point, is, you know, I guess the question I would have about a continuance is, would that help the applicant? I mean, the variance has already been denied, but would it be better for the applicant to go back to redesign, or is it better for them to appeal, or does it matter? Maybe, I don't know.
I mean, I think it would be the applicant to decide whether, what would happen at that point, what would they want, and, you know, exactly that Commissioner Hernandez pointed out.
All right, do we want to bring the applicant up? Okay, would you mind coming back up, please?
So, to my understanding, is that if I get denied tonight, and, and I design the home with a, with a 20-foot setback, which makes it 29 feet from the curb, with a 30-foot white house, which complies to all the design zoning standards, I don't have to come back here. Is that correct?
Well, you'll still need a permit for that, CDP, for that house, because during the original CDP application in February, we gave you a CDP for all the other remaining lots except this one lot. So, you would still need a CDP. I don't know if it could be issued ministerially, or maybe you could help us out, Winter, on that.
I might defer to Steve on this one, but typically, if there's no variance for certain projects, the community development director can process the CDP without bringing it necessarily to the planning commission.
That's what I understood.
Thank you, Winter.
So, that's what I understood, that we would not have to come back here with a 30-foot home.
Well, I, that, I can't, I can't tell you about how you're going to design it to comply with the zoning, that, that's what you would need to do, so...
But I'm not, okay, but I'm not, I'm not asking you to tell me, I'm telling you that if I design a home that's 30 feet wide, has five feet on one side and 20 feet on the other, or 15 feet on the other, I'm, my understanding is that I don't have to come back here. Is that correct?
Steve, if you could please hop out on that, please.
That, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, if I don't have to come back here, from this point, if you deny me, I'm going to appeal, I'm going to city council.
Okay, thank you.
So, I reinstate the motion for the denial of the coastal development permit, architectural review, and setback variance to allow the construction of a new two-story, single-family residence and attached accessory dwelling units at 595 Creekside Court in the commercial downtown CD zoning district and the commercial general land use designation. And this is only for Lot 10, I want to make sure that that's clear, because that's not clear in the title here.
Okay, second.
Commissioner Riddick?
I vote no.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
No.
Vice Chair Johannes?
Yes.
And Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Motion of denial, three, two.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break.
At this point, we're going to take a five-minute break. At this point, we're going to take a five-minute break. Last remaining item, which is a continuation of our Measure D. The ballot measure amending Measure D, the city voter approved residential growth limitations program in its city file, PDP 2024-035. And I believe Akoi is going to make the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening again, Honorable Chair and Planning Commissioners. Yeah, this is a continuance from our previous item, and so I will recap a bit on just the general overview, but this presentation will focus mostly on new information that we are trying to provide. So just some background, as like I said, a brief overview for anyone that's not familiar with the item. This is to propose amendments to the local coastal land use plan as well as the zoning ordinance through a proposed ballot measure to Measure D. Council provided direction to staff to prepare that ballot measure back in March. And then, apologies, my dates are a little bit out of order, but on June 11th, we came to the Planning Commission to present, to gather their feedback for a recommendation for the City Council, in which there was a motion to continue the item. As a check-in, staff then also went to the City Council to provide feedback and confirm that they wanted to continue with this direction based on the work staff was doing and feedback from the Planning Commission. Measure D is the city's residential growth allocation system. It was adopted by voters in 1999, but wasn't in effect until 2009, when it was certified by the Coastal Commission. It has consistently accommodated up to 1.5% of population growth annually. This is divided between a downtown and an outside of downtown. The downtown receives 1% of that, whereas the outside of downtown receives 0.5% of that. The current exemptions under Measure D are replacements of existing dwelling units on a one-for-one basis, and then California density bonus law units. The proposed amendments that would be associated with this ballot measure would include exempting ADUs and lower-income affordable housing units from both the local coastal land use plan and the zoning ordinance from Measure D, as well as would amend the downtown map area to match the town center map within the local coastal land use plan. Some information that was asked about at the previous meeting was regarding the Housing Crisis Act. This act aims to increase residential development, protect housing inventory, and expedite permitting, permit processing. In the case of our, typically, this would not allow jurisdictions to enforce growth measures. However, within the Half Moon Bay is fully within the coastal zone, therefore, this does not override the Coastal Act or prohibit the city from, and cannot prohibit the city from implementing its certified local coastal program. So the city must continue to implement Measure D unless it's amended, voter-approved, and then certified by the Coastal Commission. In regards to state ADU law, this is discussed a little bit in a previous staff report that was provided to the City Council back in March. It discusses how our updated, our ADU ordinance was updated in 2018 and 2022 to align with state law. But state ADU law does not override the growth control measures that are incorporated into the local coastal program. So therefore, it would still require California Coastal Commission certification to amend these measures. Some more information that was requested at the previous meeting was information relating to the other general plan elements. So we'll discuss more, we'll provide more information on conformance with the local coastal land use plan and the housing element. And some of these other elements that were asked about were the circulation element and the safety element, which are both, both in need of updating, specifically the safety element, measured, it actually predates Measure D and is currently being updated. So that gives staff the opportunity to implement some new information in relation to any new potential amendments or provisions. In relation to the circulation element, we'll discuss that a bit as it relates to the city's build-out. So with the local coastal land use plan, one aspect of this is, there is policy that was implemented into the city's 2020 updated land use plan, which looks to provide an opportunity to update Measure D in order to align with, align and accommodate development of affordable housing within Half Moon Bay. So staff finds these amendments to be in conformance with that. Also, the updated land use plan in 2020 included updates to priority uses. Therefore, affordable housing is considered a local coastal priority use as it relates to water connections. And when it is considered farmworker housing as well, that is also considered a Coastal Act priority use. Within the local coastal land use plan, there is a build-out projection within Appendix B, which was also asked about at the previous meeting. Staff has taken a look at this, and some areas we want to point out as it relates to the build-out are the, is specifically the maximum theoretical build-out potential, which looks at the potential for 2,221 new residential dwelling units within that projection. Based on staff's anticipated projections through historic trends, we would anticipate that new dwelling units with or without the growth measure would be well within these numbers. The build-out also looks at some of the main areas and how it relates to traffic impacts. However, this is a limited, it's just based on a circulation projection model. It isn't a thorough overview as it relates to all of the roads within Half Moon Bay. But it does look at the level of service as well as delays as it relates to 2018 and then 2040, 2040 considering growth measures, and then the maximum theoretical build-out, which would also be 2040, but not considering a growth measure being in place. And as you can see, between 2040 and the maximum theoretical build-out, there of course are some concerns as it regards to traffic impacts, but these aren't significantly different as it relates to those two projections. But again, this is limited to these main areas of travel and is also based on there being no improvements over that time, so the road system remaining exactly as it was in 2018. To provide a bit more feedback on the housing element and how this, and our regional housing needs allocation numbers, 480 total units are anticipated by 2031 within this draft cycle six housing element. 285 of these are anticipated to be affordable, lower income, and that would include a certain amount of ADUs that would be considered low or very low. Total ADUs, it's projecting 112. And that number is able to be estimated and broken down based on a percentage. So that's where we're seeing these breakdowns of these numbers of 34 very low and 34 low. It's based on an assumption of a certain percentage that is allowed to be used within the housing element. But again, this is still just drafted, has not yet officially been adopted. Some additional data, looking back on a survey staff did in looking at existing ADUs and current occupancy, that, based on that survey, it was found that the average persons per household of ADUs was around 1.75. Now, this is not representative of the entire city, and it is a small sample size, but it just does give us a number to look at in terms of that occupancy. Based on census data and the number used to calculate Measure D allocations for 2024, the number of persons per household was 2.86. So you can anticipate somewhere in there, we would find an average between those two persons per household. The housing element is projecting 14 ADUs permitted annually within that eight-year basis to meet that 112 ADUs number. When you look at that with the persons per household, this would consider there being approximately 25 additional people, considering all of those ADUs are occupied and consist of new residents to Half Moon Bay. A couple of commissioners took some interest in this table, which is located in the staff report to the City Council that was on December 5th, 2023, in looking at the number of allocations for the 2024 Measure D period. So this number pulls that information together. It's been shared annually in the staff reports, in that annual staff report each year. So you can see how many, we've been looking at, on average, it's around 66 allocations per year. In total, since 2016, that would have permitted 606 new units in Half Moon Bay. Of those, only 342 were issued, so there are remaining 264. Now, those do not carry over, so that is just a certain percentage that is just kind of lost. This looks, again, a table that you may have all seen, either in a staff report from the City Council, to the City Council on March 19th, or in our previous meeting, we also looked at this number, or this table. And here, we're providing the same table. I've tried to make the numbers larger, as I received some feedback, they're quite small last time. And then also trying to provide some totals to give you guys more of an idea of what we've looked at over the last five years of Measure D. So as you can see, in those five years, a total of 334 allocations were available. 251 were issued. 70 were not, 70 people that applied for an allocation did not receive one. That includes both ADUs and single-family, multifamily, anything that would require an allocation. I'll give you one more minute just to look at that. All right, and this is a continuance of that last table. It isn't new information, it just breaks it down in a different way. So you can see, in total, 115 ADUs received allocations over those years. And of the, of ADUs that applied in the previous table, 37 of them did not receive allocations. So that would have been 37 additional units over that time had ADUs been exempt. Units that were not ADUs, this mostly consists of single-family residences, would have consisted of 33 additional units. Staff also looked at how our projections compared to other jurisdictions to see how that could impact the community. We tried to look at those that had similarities to us, but also provided Berkeley as a reference of somebody who is, or of a jurisdiction that is, has very few similarities to Half Moon Bay, being very high-density, highly urbanized, and a much larger population. So Berkeley is projecting around 680. Our most similar jurisdiction is Carpinteria. They're located in the coastal zone, they have a similar population density to Half Moon Bay, they're also surrounded by rural areas. And from my understanding, I don't believe they have a growth measure in place. They are also projecting 112 new ADUs within their housing element, cycle six housing element. And all of these jurisdictions have also had their housing elements adopted that we pulled this information from. Looking more into the downtown area, I know last time, there were some concerns regarding the map and being able to see that, so I'm actually going to provide two maps for you in this presentation. This first one is from our GIS system that shows an overlay of the town center with the existing Measure D map. The town center is going to be that, if your colors working correctly on your screen, kind of a yellow highlighted area, and then a mix of colors within there. And then areas outside of that are in orange, and that's going to be the Measure D downtown. So you can see, there are a couple areas that will no longer be included, but there are some, some new areas as well, where you can see the coloring most prominently, specifically that blue, and then a darker red. This slide also shows that a bit more. The red is going to be areas that will now be included within the town center map, and the blue areas will no longer be included within the Measure D downtown. So our next steps are the same as last time, other than the date on here, my apologies, is actually incorrect. I believe there will be, as it says in the staff report, a date in August, that City Council could potentially review this item. The steps following, any Planning Commission recommendation would be for City Council to review this item, and they could potentially adopt a resolution to place this on the ballot, in which case it would be placed on the November 5th, 2024 ballot. It would then be up to the voters, and ultimately, the California Coastal Commission would have to certify it as part of our local coastal land use plan. The recommendations are the same as last time. You can adopt a resolution to recommend this to the City Council, or alternatively, may choose to recommend to the City Council to not place a measure on the ballot. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Akoi, for the wonderful presentation. At this point, I'm going to open us up to public input, and I'm going to ask Naomi to speak out first, and then after that, Tim, and then Mike, and then Patricia.
Can you hear me?
You can, I'm sorry.
Hello, good night. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, this is my first time speaking to you all. My name's Noemi Ramirez, I've been here all my life. We recently applied for Measure D to build a single home for my family and I. It was very unfortunate that we did not get approved. It was very unfortunate that we did not get approved. I think if, I mean, we are, we need housing ASAP. I think if a family has like the resources to be able to build a home here in the place that, you know, I grew up, the city should be able to grant us a, an allocation. I guess it sucks to call this like our home, but then we can't afford housing here. We're either like not rich enough to be able to afford a house here, but then we don't, we're not low-income enough to be able to qualify for low-income. So then what happens to the people that are stuck in the middle? We live with my parents in their house, and we're going to be a family of four soon. So we need housing, like yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Hello, my name's Tim Pond, and I live over at six-five-one Potter. Thank you very much for having this meeting tonight. And so a couple of things I'd like to mention is, I do design and build them, and I've met a lot of people that have these. And I would say a good proportion of these are used by family members for their kids or for their parents. And that is a different demographic. So along with the one point seven-five persons per household, you're seeing a much lesser impact on traffic and other impacts that you might see from housing units. Some of them are never rented, and some of the Measure Ds are never used. And I don't know if that came up in the, in the, I've had quite a few people had their Measure Ds just expire and never get used once they're issued. So also, you know, it does have to be, and I, I support putting this to the voters, because in, I think an informed public can easily make a decision about this. There's a lot of ballot measures out there that are complicated, that people vote for, that don't, you know, that go into many different streams. I think this is one that you can decide to push forward and let the voters of Half Moon Bay, the people that live here, have an informed decision on. I think it's very reasonable to ask that this be granted. I actually wrote a ballot measure and got thirteen hundred signatures for it, but it was, the signature page was messed up. And I talked to thousands of people, and the vast majority of people said, "What? They're not allowed? You're kidding me." So, a couple of other things. Anyway, it's elder care too, this is about elder care. This is about people who want to house their parents and not having to go through a Measure D process. I have a couple right now, they had to wait six months to get the Measure D. You know, they, they finally got it, they're going to have, they're going to be able to be cared for by their family. This is an elder care and, and multi-generational housing model that needs to be expressed in our community. Multi-generational housing fits our demographic of our growing society. I live in a three-thousand-foot house, my kids have moved away, I don't need all this space. I want to cut it up, give some to other people, so the square footage is used properly, used to house people. And so that's about all I think I have to say today. But the multi-general housing, multi-generational housing element, I think is extremely important. And also that you can just remember to put it to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Good evening, Chair Gossett, commissioners, staff. I want to begin with talking about the map. The object of putting the map before you for a recommendation to the council is that that map that's being recommended as a replacement is actually already in your LCP. It just isn't connected to Measure D. And that's really important, because it's a common sense map for what represents downtown and where people want to go. So I am hopeful that tonight, that map can be, at least can be forwarded to the council with a recommendation to put it on the ballot, especially since the city is already going to be putting a tax measure on the ballot. So maybe they'll save a little money at the elections department. So, but let's get back to Measure D then. There was some good discussion at the city council involving myself and the staff. And I detected at the council that they're very interested now in the planning commission to bring forward a recommendation as not just to put this on the ballot, but really, should we? And they're open to that. And I heard a lot of respect expressed for the planning commission, not just by the council, but by the city manager. So all in all, it was a very good meeting. I think one of the things I, I really think we need to get out in the open is that Measure D, in its twenty-five years of existence, has not been some massive hoodoo on housing applications. It isn't. It's only a very few years that we've ever seen any constraint from Measure D. And the effect is those applications get moved to the next year. Or in the worst possible case, maybe next year and the next year. That's it. The whole purpose of Measure D is not to kill applications, but to smooth it out. That's it. That was the stated intention of Measure A and then Measure D, both of which were passed by huge majorities. Now, if you tell people, "Oh, they're killing ADUs", well, they may believe that ADUs are being killed. And so they'll react emotionally to that. But the fact is, they're not. And if you look at the real data, what you see is that if we're having trouble getting to performance on the RHNA, the real problem is the number of people that don't bother getting a building permit. And there's probably yet another problem in how many even take those to a certificate of occupancy. That's where we're going to have trouble with the HCD, because apparently they believe in hoodoo up there, okay? The, mathematically speaking, Measure D is not the problem. And I'm hopeful that this planning commission, as talented as it is, can look at perhaps ordinance changes that could somehow get a higher yield on the Measure Ds once they're issued, so that they turn into building permits and actual certificates of occupancy. So that's it for tonight. I ask that you recommend to the city council that we not put a ballot measure to change Measure D, but rather put the map on the ballot to rationalize it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And Patricia?
Hi, my name is Patricia Stevenson, I just have a couple of quick comments. The last meeting was really long, wasn't it? You make comparisons to other, excuse me, communities. I, I feel we're pretty unique in just how locked in we are. You know, the little to no impact on traffic, I keep hearing that. I believe the ADUs would probably be more so for families, so it might not be so much of an impact on traffic. If I built one, it'd be for my child. But we have a lot of projects going on that this isn't going to impact us, this isn't going to impact us. But as a whole, things do impact us. And the comparisons, you know, like say if we have a, a public emergency, a tsunami, you know, we only have one road out of here. And that's not changing, so increasing our population is, it's a concern, but we do need housing desperately. And my last comment really is, just because it's an ADU doesn't mean it's going to be affordable. If it wasn't for my child, I would be asking market value for anything I put my hard-earned money into building. So that's pretty much my comments for tonight. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Juan?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Juan Vasquez. I applied for the measure, me and my dad, applied for the Measure D in two thousand and twenty-two, and we were denied. And we applied for a reason that we need more living space, because we have a big family and we just need living space. And that's about it.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers online?
We have none.
Okay, I will close public comment for this item and ask Commissioner Gorn if you have any clarifying questions.
I do have one. So one of the charts that you put up, Akoi, was really close to the one that was, that I was asking about. I was asking about the one that was table number three that was in the city council report. It's a little different than what you have here. The leftover allocations, is that what that means? Because what it said in the, in city council chart is residential building permits issued.
Oh, my apologies, I do think we thought you were referring to a, a different table. Do you happen, someone had the staff report again?
It's table three in the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three city council meeting.
So, in briefly looking at that, I believe it's... My apologies, I only took the first portion of that, that we had already created into a table. So you are correct that...
Is there a way to look at that? Because I'm actually not the only person who, who saw that.
Yeah, let me see.
Thank you.
All right, so we, here we have this pulled up. And I, I do actually have another table that we did not include with the presentation, but as a backup slide, that does include some of this information as well that we can, we can show you as well. But we can discuss it here first, and then I can show you that.
Can you walk me through it a little bit? Because it looks like it's kind of slightly different information than from what I've seen before.
Yeah, so the first column should just be based on available allocations for Measure D. That would be just based on that one point five percent that's approved by city council. The second column are the Measure Ds that were issued that year. And then building permits. The reason you're going to see some of these building permits number, numbers as higher than the Measure D allocations, I believe, is because this is likely based off of building permits that maybe they received an allocation a previous year, and that's carrying over into that next year.
So, so the way I read it, so that's kind of what I figured, is if it's slop, carry over from the year, year or years before. But it kind of looks like, on average, there's sixty-eight available allocations. Forty-seven of them were issued. So there's twenty-one there that were available and not issued. And then of those, there's still another, let me, if I can do the math, twenty-one? Another twenty-one where we issued Measure D allocations, but nothing was built. Is that right?
I...
I mean, it's an average, it's not looking at like year by year.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit difficult to draw that conclusion, just because some building permits, their Measure D is good for at least a year. There is an opportunity to apply for an extension, as well as if they're still in the CDP phase, they haven't gotten to the building permit process. So, and we have had homes that have dragged out for multiple years. So you're not going to see those building permits reflected in the, that following year or potentially even a couple of years later. So it, it is kind of a, a difficult table to draw some information out of. I don't know how it's described within the staff report. But there, there's just a lot of different variables, I would say, in association with how these numbers are, are drawn. And I can show you the, another table that I've provided. It will have some of those same errors in terms of, or caveats. But here we have... Sorry, I'm trying to pull it up large again. Yeah, so here we have a, some more information, looking at the annual progress report data. I, looking at ADUs and then other units. So this is, and then on the far side, you'll see the Measure D allocations issued. So that's the only thing that you won't see here.
So this was in the staff report? This one was in the staff report, right?
No. No, this one we haven't presented, it was not within the staff report. I, I just put it together prior to this meeting today. So it was a bit of a backup for any questions, but we didn't have time to incorporate that fully within the staff report or the presentation. And we wanted to ensure anything we included in that was going to have the most accurate data. And this should be relatively accurate, but there could be a couple discrepancies. But it's all data pulled from the annual progress reports. One thing you'll want to note is, when comparing the years, again, it's going to be offset a year or so. So, but you can see, and I've bolded the ADUs, and I meant to, bolded ADUs that were completed. And, and that would mean that these had their, they were final. So they, you can see based on entitlement permitting and completion. But it does show that as the process goes on, you are losing some allocations. Whether or not those are carrying over or fully being lost, we don't know the exact proportion.
I have a related follow-up question to the chair.
Well, let's see if he's finished.
No, I mean, I, I think that's, if you could just keep that other slide just to somewhere, so that we can look at it a little later, that'd be great. Because I just didn't see it anywhere. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on this. Is there a one-to-one relationship between, in the data we're looking at, is there a one-to-one relationship between entitlements and permitted projects? Like some projects might consume multiple Measure Ds but only get one permit. Is that part of what we might be seeing in some of the other data we saw?
This should be a per-unit count. Because within our APR, we, at least where we're pulling the data from, it's based on, within recent years, in two thousand and twenty, it wasn't there. So that year, we had to kind of do more counting. But in recent years, there's a summary table associated with the annual progress reports, and it summarizes the type of units and the number of each unit that they're reporting being built, entitled, or permitted during that year.
Would it be fair to say the city has a higher degree of confidence...
Yeah, so within the housing element, it's an assumed proportion of ADUs would be considered very low, low, moderate, or above moderate, which would be market value. And it, those that are considered very low and low, which makes up, I believe, 30% each, would knock down those affordable housing numbers. It should be around 68, I believe, are projected out of the 112. So it would be that 285 minus 68. And the rest would be other affordable housing units.
Great. So with respect to our new cycle six housing element and HCD, I'm having a hard time keeping the plot straight on what's happening there. But I'm under the impression that there's some pressure from HCD to remove ADUs from, from our measure D growth measure. And we're having, could you elaborate on what we've heard from HCD on this, if anything, and what the city's position is on that?
Yeah, I can generally elaborate. I have not personally read the letters that we have received from HCD. But from my understanding, there is, HCD has some concerns in regards to the growth measure applying to accessory dwelling units. This is highlighted a bit more in the March 19th staff report to city council. So I would refer to looking at the language specifically in that, which I do not know off the top of my head, but I can open it up here and, and look at it. But there is certainly some concerns that have been raised there. Whether or not that is pressure or not for this measure, I couldn't speak on that.
I don't need you to read, read that for us. And it's, and I don't need you to be a political guru for us. There's a lot going on with HCD. I, I sent this question to you in advance, and it's, it's somewhat related to this particular measure. But outside of ADUs, once we've developed the requisite number of 285 affordable units of housing, how does state density bonus law work? Does it no longer apply since we've met the housing needs in RENA? It's a question, and I'm asking this because it's part of the ballot measure, there's going to be questions about how affordable housing plays with state density bonus law. So could you just help me understand how that works?
Yeah, so the, the RENA numbers should not impact state bonus law, density bonus units. Those would still all be the same and be applicable despite whether or not the RENA numbers are met. And it would still, the density bonus units would remain exempt from measure D. So none of that would be impacted as a result of, of the RENA numbers.
Okay, thank you. I have no further clarifying questions.
Commissioner Joannis?
Actually, a lot of my questions are answered, but I do have, and I probably have more after I think through more of what's been said. About the map, there were certain reasons why the map was included, as it was, in the ordinance. And now we're seeking to change that. And there are going to be certain properties that are not included. What is that impact? And why are those not included? And I understand the whole issue about, oh, we just need to match it up with the land use plan. But there's been specific issues with this map, or there were specific discussions of this map way back in 1998, 1999, 2000, 2003. And it was very, very controversial. And to change a map just because it matches a map that we have, I don't know what analysis was done in the LUP. And is that going to cause controversy at this point in time if we eliminate and add certain, certain types of areas? So that's the question I have.
So I can't speak exactly to why the 1998 redevelopment survey made the map the way it was. From my understanding, it was at the time predicted to be a downtown area that would be reflective of what downtown was in 2001. I was looking forward to that time. But why that was what they decided, I don't know. Honestly, I was still learning to walk at that time. So that is beyond me. But in regards to the new town center map, there would be more units within what I think the general population sees as the downtown, that core area where you could actually walk to Main Street, you could get to restaurants without having to drive, or take your bike more places. It's, it's a more core area. It's more walkable. For example, currently, within that redevelopment survey from 1998, the most western portion of Johnston Street isn't even included in the downtown area. I recently had a project looking at that, and I was a bit baffled by that, that they could be so close to City Hall and not be within the downtown area. So this town center map would include what I think a lot of people, that heritage downtown area has become very significant within Half Moon Bay. And so it currently doesn't include a large portion of that heritage downtown area and would now include that. It would also include the South Downtown, which is Popular Street. There's, there are a lot of single-family lots in that area still. And that's another area that is considered infill. It's close to downtown. And it would, this map would also eliminate some of those areas, like over by the Sam Plant, where that is considered downtown. But walking from there to downtown, I think, would be quite a mission. So I think the impacts are, we would potentially see more infill within the downtown. Currently, some of those applications already scored decently well due to their proximity to downtown and to amenities. So that helps those already. But it would just eliminate some of that competition within that area.
So I, I don't know if the staff can do a little bit of maybe background information, surveys, whatever it is, to see if, you know, if this map is going to be helpful to the people that, you know, are being impacted, that weren't impacted before. Just to make sure that there's no unnecessary ill will or controversy that comes up. Because from what I understand, back in those days, it used to be quite a problem. And I think a discussion needs to be had, because I, I'd hate to be in, in conflict with whatever the agreed-upon things were. I mean, there's areas in here that I agree should be in the downtown area versus not. But there are also areas that maybe those people that own those properties now counted on being in the downtown, you know, in the downtown area, and now they're not. So I, I don't know what those implications are. I just want to make sure that I'm not stepping in anything crazy if I were to agree to something, and I don't have the conceptual knowledge or, or history of that. There was one thing I did notice in reading our measure D that says, it says 80%, oh yeah, it's the exemptions, oops, it's the exemptions to the development. And it, one of the clarifications or the new things that would be in the new ordinance would be any unit that is deed restricted for a lower-income household defined as a household making 80% or less. In comparing, I mean, I don't know where that 80% came from, but looking at the HCD information on what that is, it said 75%. Is there a difference, difference between what HCD is asking for and what we're asking for? And I don't know if you have that answer. It's just something that popped up when I was doing my research.
Yeah, I haven't heard the 75%. I've heard pretty consistently the 80%, maybe Winter Marlene can elaborate on exactly where that 80% is coming from. As I believe, it's, it's not just a number that the, the city picked up. It is consistently used as being considered what would be a low or very low income would be making below that.
Oh, you know what? I, I think I read it in the HCD's grant applications for info lots, I think for info development. I think that maybe that's what I looked at. Anyway, it was something, it was different, and I thought that that stood up. But I, I just wanted to understand that. Regarding, regarding the comparisons, and I understand why Berkeley was picked, because Berkeley's Berkeley. But, you know, Santa Cruz is much larger than we are, and they need housing because they have the university there, you know. And so does, so does Carpinteria has, you know, Santa Barbara, and that whole area is very impacted. So I was wondering if there's something, what does Solana Beach do? Or, you know, Camarillo, or something like that, that we could use those as comparisons as well? Because they seem to be, you know, closer to us. And Camarillo's, well, it used to be like the Half Moon Bay. It's changed a little bit. But Camarillo would be a good one. Oh, Oxnard, even though that too has, you know, increased. It used to be a farming development town. So I'm just wondering if, you know, there's other things that we can look at, because they also are in that coastal zone. Mobile homes in measure D at all? Or do we look at mobile homes?
Mobile homes do require a measure D allocation, correct?
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. In the report somewhere, I read that we were considered urban based on the plans. But yet, I thought we were actually considered rural under a Rural Farm Act. And I was wondering if we were changing that designation, because I think it would impact the Cabrillo Unified School District in terms of the, their access to the UC system. So did the town decide to change our classification from urban, from rural to urban? That's my question.
Yeah, so the definition within the, the staff report that I think you're referring to under the Housing Crisis Act, they, there is a list provided by HCD of the urban, what are considered the urbanized cities, which are considered affected cities under the Housing Crisis Act. And Half Moon Bay is on that list. How that ties into the rural designation that you're referring to that may impact the school district, I'm not sure. In this case, this was pulled from specifically that, that list of who the Housing Crisis Act would impact.
I think it comes from census data. That's where the, the urban designation comes from.
Okay, thank you. And I, maybe I didn't hear this when Commissioner Joannis was asking about the map, but have all the property owners impacted by the map, map changes, potential map changes been notified?
Not directly by mail, other than the duly public, public notice required for this hearing that notifies people of the, of these potential amendments.
I think for now, that's it with my questions. Does anyone else have questions?
The, just to be clear, the, the map can only be changed by voters. Is that right? Just to be absolutely clear.
I believe so, because it is still within measure D that was, was previously voted on.
Okay, thanks.
Could you clarify that? Only because, and I'm not sure, I'm just asking the question, because my understanding was that there was, okay, there was a measure A and then a measure D. And the measure D came about, and the voters came in. But then the city staff created the, you know, ordinance language, and then also presented a map after the, the ballot measure. So I'm not, I'm not entirely sure if the ballot measure included the map way back then.
That was my question?
So I believe with the 1999 ballot measure, it did include the map in that original measure. And based on a staff report that was also provided, that same one I keep referencing, has good information that was provided to the city council, that the map would also require voter approval to amend it.
Thank you.
I have a clarifying question, and this one probably is one that Matt or Winter might need to answer. I believe with respect to the definition of the maps, my understanding is, we came to that after two years of hearings with the G-PAC, direction from multiple city councils, and dozens of outreach meetings, outreach meetings that happened as part of the LUP update. Is that fair summary? That's how we got to this definition of map?
Man, that light is so helpful when it's there. You're referring to the current map in the LUP that is being proposed to be replaced. That's correct.
And I'm not aware of any objections to the creation of the downtown center map in any of those meetings, are you? I certainly don't remember any public comments in the dozens of meetings I participated in.
I don't recall it coming up. I mean, we haven't researched that. But of the issues that came up, that, that doesn't seem to be one that was of any dispute throughout that process.
I think I have a 500-page document somewhere, and I think the city might have a copy of it with every public comment that was submitted. And I think it's indexed.
Okay, that might be helpful.
Does anyone else have clarifying questions? Commissioner Gorn, did you want to start deliberation on our next steps?
Well, I guess, you know, when we sent this back for more data, I was, I was a little skeptical of that you could come up with all the things that we were asking for in two weeks. And so I, I did have sort of other, sort of things to discuss and talk about, which, you know, like what other things the staff thinks might, like, so there's, there's a couple of different things. One is, you know, the council should see a need for a ballot measure, right? Because it's this, it should take a lot of data to reverse a voter initiative. So, so we need to prove, show why there's a big crunch, like...
to be one that was of any dispute throughout that process.
I think I have a 500-page document somewhere, and I think the city might have a copy of it with every public comment that was submitted, and I think it's indexed.
Okay, that might be helpful.
Commissioner Goran, did you want to start deliberation on our next steps?
Well, I guess, you know, when we sent this back for more data, I was a little skeptical of that you could come up with all the things that we were asking for in two weeks. And so I did have sort of other sort of things to discuss and talk about, which, you know, like what other things the staff thinks might, like, so there's a couple of different things. One is, you know, the council should see a need for a ballot measure, right? Because it should take a lot of data to reverse a voter initiative. So we need to prove, show why there's a big crunch, like why Measure D is not working. And we need Measure D to be amended because it's not working. And then we also were talking about data in terms of if the exemptions were made, you know, that seems like it would open up a lot of Measure Ds for single-family residential homes, which is kind of the opposite of what we wanted to do. So we were hoping to get, I was hoping to get, data that sort of showed what would happen if we made those changes, if the city council decided to propose this as a ballot measure. And, you know, so I do think that two weeks is like not enough time to do that. I don't want to take up all the staff time on, you know, on something like that. But I also do think that if the city council is going to look at something like this, that they need the data to back it up. Because we are talking about amending the LCP, we are talking about amending Measure D, which is tied into LCP. And, you know, to do that, we just need to make sure we're doing the right thing and that we're, that as a planning commission, we're understanding what is being offered to city council. And that I still don't see, and I would like to, but so that's one side. And then the other thing is, I feel like there's a lot of, like, if Measure D is an issue, and all the allocations that people are getting denied allocations for Measure Ds, that there could be a lot of ideas and solutions that we could do without amending Measure D that I was hoping staff could come back to us with. Like, for instance, when we looked at that one, you know, when I saw that permit one, the one where the, I don't know, can we put that one up? Just so that I can, like, it seemed really, I mean, if anything, the data, if anything, the data kind of shows that Measure D is working and that not all the allocations are even being used. And that of the allocations that are being used, half of them are not even being built. So I wondered, you know, in the point process, the, you know, where we decide who gets Measure Ds, maybe you get a point for having failed last time, or a couple of points for having failed last time, so that you get bumped up a little bit. Maybe you want to put a cap on that, so you don't just accumulate points over many years. Maybe that would be a solution. Maybe, you know, nine months after a Measure D is issued, maybe you want to, like, find out if they're at a point where they could get a permit, because this permit seems really low on the list of, like, things to do to process, you know, to build your house. And so, like, if you're not using those permits, maybe we could bump some of them back into the pool and have even a bigger pool of Measure Ds. Or help them get those permits going so that they can, you know, so that they can build them. Those are things that I felt like are like honest solutions to what, if there actually is a problem, where people are being denied Measure Ds because there just aren't enough of them. Like, it seems like there's a lot of ways to get, you know, to get those to them, including the point system, including, you know, if what you want is more affordable housing, trying to also tie that in, I know it's already tied into the point system, but maybe changing the point system to make it even more skewed to ADUs or to, you know, I don't know. So those kind of proposals, you know, are sort of part of, to me, part of that whole proposal about the need for a ballot measure, like exhausting some of the other ideas. You know, here's all the things we've tried, here's all the things that could be, that we might be doing. You know, you know, those things aren't going to be enough, so we're going to need a ballot measure, because the overwhelming evidence shows us that there's so many people out there waiting for Measure Ds who aren't getting them, or there's so much affordable housing that could be built if they didn't have to wait for a Measure D. I don't see that data here at all. I just don't see it. If anything, I see the opposite. I see a lot of Measure D allocations going unissued, and I see a lot of Measure D allocations when they're allocated not being built. And that's like, so then, you know, recommending to the city council that they, you know, put up a ballot measure, you know, and circumvent that process where, you know, somebody said they tried to collect signatures. Well, you know, that's how you do it. You collect signatures. If you want to change something that needs voter approval, you get signatures, you put it on the ballot, you don't, like, go through the council to do it. So, like, that's an extraordinary measure to go through the council. That's fine if there's an emergency, if there's like something that is just driving it. So I was looking for information that helps me say, okay, that's, you know, there's an emergency here and we need to fix it, because all these Measure Ds are, you know, people are wanting them and they're just not available. And we've looked at all these other ways to try to make them available and we can't do it, but not what's here. Like, what's here looks like not all the allocations are actually being issued, and of the ones that aren't being issued, we're not issuing permits and getting stuff built. So, you know, and some of the other data points that you, the tables that you showed, ADUs were like half of the, what's being built, because, you know, we've pushed for ADUs. The city has pushed for affordable housing, the council has made affordable housing, you know, their primary goal, and they've done a lot of things to get affordable housing, including pushing ADUs. So, and the Stone Pine Center, and getting the county to buy Bay City, you know, all of those things are all leading to, you know, trying to meet, not just trying to meet Rena, because we all want to meet Rena, but really what we want is affordable housing for people, and that's what the city council wants. I don't see that Measure D is the big holdup and that there's some dramatic evidence that shows that. I don't see it. So, I guess, sorry to be so long-winded, but it just seems really clear to me that that's, like, we're just, we just don't have the data to recommend that to the city council. Thank you.
Commissioner Rudek?
Thank you, Chair Gossett. I think it's important to not mischaracterize this ballot measure, potential ballot measure. You know, it's not a question of emergencies, it's a simple truth, is that Measure D has been working very well for Half Moon Bay for a long time. The city council, you know, being awake and alert, has noticed that Half Moon Bay residents as residents throughout California are very intrigued by the benefits that ADUs can bring to families in towns like ours. And city council directed staff to prepare a draft ballot measure, possibly to go to the voters, that would make, that would continue Measure D and make two very simple, small changes to it, to exempt ADUs and deed-restricted affordable housing. It's not a revolution, it would be a small change. And the additional data that we asked staff to bring back to us is interesting. You know, it's not, it's not ever going to provide the guaranteed look into the future that some commissioners seem to want. But if you look at the number of people who had applied to build ADUs in the last few years and were denied, it works out to something like seven or eight a year on average. And if you look at Carpinteria and those bigger communities, and you take a fraction of ADU plans from the cities that are bigger than ours, you can see something like, you know, 100, 112 ADUs projected to be built and through the end of the cycle. So what would add up to a small change in the total number of units in Half Moon Bay, but a change that could make an important difference to a lot of residents? I also want to remind everybody that the important fact that the staff report mentions, the city council every year has the prerogative to hold Measure D certificates to 1% or go up to 1.5%. So if, for some reason, then typically they have gone up to 1.5%, but they don't have to do that. That could be another break on this. So I think in truth, common sense would tell us that there's no threat of out-of-control ADU building that would come from this. And I don't see any honest and reasonable reason to keep such a choice from the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rudek. Commissioner Hernandez?
I think, so I agree with Commissioner Rudek's points, although there is a third reform for Measure D that we're talking about, which is changing the map, which I think is something that has been discussed in great detail extensively, as Matt confirmed, and I've participated in many of these meetings. I don't think there's any controversy around the maps. And I can't recall a single comment made in opposition to changing the borders of Town Center. Now, it's fair to say, well, you didn't talk about, how does it apply to Measure D in this old map? I think that that's a fair discussion, and I do think it's important that staff and work communicating to people whose property rights might potentially change. I think that is an important thing that needs to happen as part of the Measure D process. I think it's false to say it's not a dramatic impact to two people who are in this room who've had to wait years and had their projects denied because of this, I'll call it an administrative interpretation of how we're supposed to apply Measure D for ADUs. I think it has soaked up housing for people who would otherwise be housed today, and there's two people in the back here who are directly impacted by it. Sure, there's an infinite number of ways that we could probably write this, many of them might be better than, you know, there might be better reforms that we could come up with. I do think it's an interesting concept to think about, what do we do with expired Measure Ds? I think that that is something that could have been looked at. But to me, the item before us seems like a moderate change to Measure D, it keeps it in place, it removes a potential legal risk and potential impacts with respect to HCD. I mean, just takes things off the table altogether, takes, potentially takes some things off the table altogether. And frankly protects Measure D as a whole. And I think, I don't want to mischaracterize things, but my neighbor, who's on the city council, fellow in the back here who is our former mayor, and a mayor who passed away, or a city council member who passed away, Mr. Iverson, my understanding and conversations I've had with them, things that I've heard, is it's, the idea here is we're trying to keep, yes, regulate the pace of development, regulate the pace of growth, but a big concern that I've heard from people is the reason why we have this, it makes it hard for a large developer to come in, buy a huge tract of land, and just plow things over like what you have in Southern California. That was one of the big motivations, was to kind of slow that type of development down. And I think we want to do things to protect Measure D. I think this strengthens it, cleans it up, it conforms to, I mean, the map certainly conforms to what we've talked about. Whether or not we should change it, I don't know. That's, I think it's good to put it in front of the voters, and I agree with Steve that there are two ways to get an item on the ballot. One is by getting a voter initiative, which Tim Pond got thousands of them, but, you know, he didn't put his signature page together correctly. And the city council can put it on the ballot measure. That's just a thing that they can do, and it doesn't require an emergency, it doesn't require any drama. Those are just things they can do, and then the voters can decide. I think this is, I think this is a good thing for us to put in front of the voters and get their feedback. And I don't think we're making a, I think it actually protects the city and allows us to move forward on a few fronts in a way that's going to reduce our costs and provide orderly development and provide clarity. And for the people who are directly impacted, you know, it'll allow them to get housing. And I'll say, like, what's interesting to me is with interest rates going up and the cost of housing going up, the fact that we're taking up the allocations now, I mean, that's a sign that when interest rates go down, I suspect we're probably going to see more people want to do development, we're going to see more Measure Ds consumed by ADU allocations if we don't make changes. So I'm supportive of putting this, making a recommendation in favor of this for city council.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Joannus?
So I'd like to revisit why it is that we felt in the first place, why was this introduced in the first place? You know, just get a little bit of history lesson again, so we remember again, why did this recommendation go to city council in the first place? What was the impetus for this?
So this does go back, if you look again at that previous staff report to city council, this does go back all the way to 2014. There were some discussions at that time to look at this, and at the time, the state was in a different place in terms of housing, we had a different land use plan in effect, and it was a different housing element cycle. All of those things combined to where we are now. I think that's why the city council saw this as a good time for staff to prepare this sort of ballot measure, because within that time that this updated land use plan, the land use plan was updated, some of these zoning ordinance were updated, which incentivized ADU production, we're starting to see the impacts of Measure D. I think we don't know exactly what those impacts might continue to be as the housing needs continue to change throughout the state. So I think this is, that's part of my assumption of why this might be being brought forth now. But again, this was city council that directed staff initially to look into this, bring them some options, and then ultimately directed us to prepare a ballot measure.
Can I add a little bit to that? Just from my perspective, more just working with the council and being in council meetings, you know, on a regular basis, I think in addition to what Acoe shared, which I think is the background for where we got, you know, to what we've heard tonight, Mr. Pond did bring forward a ballot measure last year or two years ago that, were, not for technicality, would have made it to the voters. And I think that began to put the thought in council's mind that maybe the community was looking for some change. Certainly during our sessions for priority setting this year, we do our council listening sessions, this was a frequent topic, people coming forward and saying we need to change it. And then, of course, it was a topic of discussion at priority setting. You know, one of the things I heard from council, which I think speaks to why the council and not just let the community, because I think the community would have moved forward with it again this year with some learnings, so that those technicalities didn't cause a problem for the ballot initiative this year, was by taking it on as a council, it gave us the opportunity to be more thoughtful, to look at more than just one issue, but look at Measure D as a whole, and that's why they asked for options and ultimately selected the options that were used to craft the ordinance that's before you. So I think all of that is to say, the council wanted a thoughtful look at this, and I think that's also was reinforced last week at the council meeting, that they're really looking to the commission for these thoughtful questions and comments to help them deliberate if we move forward. to help them deliberate, um, if, if we move forward on the 16th or at a future meeting, to make a, a good decision about what should go before voters, if anything.
So what I, thank you, but what I also heard was, hey, we'd rather control what goes out to the public rather than it be a grassroots movement, which Measure D and Measure A was a grassroots movement way back then. So, you know, it's kind of like, maybe it's better if the people come up with their petition and their own, um, you know, ballot measure, because then it truly is what the people want. And then it would be the city's responsibility then to go educate them about the pros and cons of whatever they're doing. And so what I heard, I mean, I'm not saying right or wrong, I'm just hearing that now we're controlling grassroots movements. And it, it, I don't know, it's something, you know, if, like, uh, uh, Commissioner Hernandez says, had, uh, Mr. Pond's ballot measure, uh, you know, uh, signature page be perfect, it would have been a different story today. So, you know, that's the democratic process. Um, and, you know, to come in between that, I don't know. That's something I would want to do.
I, I just want to make sure we're careful at how that's characterized. I never heard the council say, we want control. What they said is if, if we bring it forward, it allows us to have a thoughtful discussion about the entirety of Measure D and not just one particular issue.
Sure, I understand, I understand. But, but the effect is like, hey, yeah, the, I mean, I get it. I'm not going to argue that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, I have gone through the ranking sheets, um, this past weekend. I looked at 2024, 2023, 2022, all the way back to 2021, which was, 2021 was the first year where the, um, council was asked to do a, what they called a transfer in September for the unused base allocations in the downtown area. And they only transferred the units that were affordable, because that is their priority. And there were ADUs that they didn't transfer in that September, because they didn't, they, they wanted to ensure that the transfers impacted affordability in housing. And this year, we have 17, uh, units available for transfer. And we have, I mean, the numbers match up. There's no guarantee that they're going to transfer that, those that might apply for the September transfer, because, you know, as they said in their September meeting, they only wanted to transfer affordable ADUs, because they, at that time, thought some of the ADUs are not affordable. So based on that, you know, and then when I look at the units that are now coming forward that we have data for, and it only starts, the data begins in 2021, because that's when we've had more requests for Measure D certificates. And ADU production is really good. And that's due to the fact that the ranking system reflects the policy that city council wanted in place to produce ADUs. So like this year, I mean, I can't give you the total number right now for ADUs that are going to be produced this year, but there are 12 that can be transferred in September. But maybe they won't transfer them, because they might not be considered affordable. I don't know what the thinking is going to be. I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. But the point, my overall point is that 63 allocations were available this year, and there were 59 requests. And I also would like to point out, because this was in the staff report, and I want to just correct the record. The staff report stated that, well, there are units that are waiting years. And, and that is true. Some folks have to wait a year to come back in January to, you know, reapply. But those that are waiting more than two or three years are projects that are not infill projects. And some of those, one project doesn't even have a road in front of it. And so unless they change the ranking, I mean, I'm sorry, the affordability of their ADU, they can push their, themselves all the way up to the top of the list by deed restricting their ADU, because that's the city policy, is let's create more affordable housing. And we have a mechanism within Measure D. Now, we do know, like, based on the table that was put up earlier, um, we have a production problem within the ordinance, and we really need to explore that. Why are we issuing certificates that aren't being implemented and, that, that produce housing? And we can get that data. I'm not suggesting that we do that now or before, you know, the August deadline. But we need to understand that. And we can get that data, because we know who applied for those permits. Or the, I'm sorry, I'm confusing permits with Measure D certificates, because that's what they really are. So, you know, just combing through this data that we have, and Akoi, thank you so much for what you did this past weekend. You did a really good job of pulling the stuff together to help us see that there's a production problem. And I'm not, I'm not equating that with the Measure D ordinance problem. So I, I'm not seeing it in the data that we have. So that's sort of why I don't think, at this point, you know, I would feel comfortable recommending to city council to amend the ordinance when we don't really understand the total impact to market rate housing. You know, how many, you know, single family homes are going to be produced that are not affordable? Because all of a sudden, all the ADUs are exempt. So that's sort of where I stand. Thank you.
Through the, through the chair, if I may. Um, I just wanted to correct one thing, and I, I don't want this to come off wrong. But 2021, uh, I do want to clarify, there were other units transferred that were not affordable. Um, it was a weird year. Um, I believe they went to city council twice.
Okay, thank you.
So the first round, they did first issue to those who were willing to deed restrict their homes below market rate housing. Uh, and then they, staff came back to city council uh, with, uh, an additional proposal, um, to also award Measure Ds to those located, uh, within the town center.
Well, they, they, town center already, they, they, how could I say this? The town center will always get their allocations. If there are leftover allocations, those are the allocations that are transferred, correct?
Not downtown. Um, so what I think you're referring to here is downtown will always, they've been consistently getting it. So city council actually used the town center map in 2021, uh, with those transfers.
I see what you're saying. Rather than the, um, the outside, okay, okay. Thank you so much for that clarification.
They looked at the town center map that we're actually looking at today, uh, and rewarded some of those based on that.
And, and within the constraints of the ordinance, they were perfectly, that was a legitimate action that they could take, because the ordinance allows them to have that September transfer. So in the outside of the downtown area. So, well, actually, I'm pleased to hear that, because if they're trying to produce more ADUs, they have an opportunity. Even this year, in September, we have 12 waiting in line. You know, and if they choose to, it's up to them. I can't, you know, if that's their goal to produce more ADUs, but, you know, I think the question is interesting, is it affordable? So, um, thank you, thank you, Akoi.
Can I ask a couple of clarifying questions, since we've kind of come back to this? Is there, would a voter initiative be required to not be able to reallocate a Measure D that expired from a previous year? Is there a way to recover that without a voter initiative?
I don't know that one. Can I defer to Winter?
Yeah, I was, um, after Commissioner Gorn made his comment, I was looking to see if, um, if that would require, uh, and I think frankly, we just need some more thought and research into it. Um, I think it's an interesting question and, um, uh, could be looked at.
I, I did, um, attend a study session where Jill, not the attorney, but Jill did state that during the September transfer, there might be an opportunity to transfer, well, transfer back to the city, not to another applicant, a certificate whereby the homeowner hadn't pulled a permit for the project. You know, but I don't know if that's, you know, she just thought that that could be something to be explored. And, you know, I think right now, the certificate sunset within, in a year. So I think if it was done like, you know, uh, you know, before the year ended, whatever that calendar year is, maybe that could be an opportunity to increase production. Because that's what, I'm not seeing a problem with, um, with the ordinance, I'm seeing the problem with production.
Um, through the chair, can I just, something you said, can I get clarity on that? That the city council actually used the new map? Is that right?
So with transfers, um, the city council has discretion, um, based on staff recommendations. So they did actually in 2021, um, not necessarily that map, but the neighborhoods defined by the map, um, were considered. And so they did look at the, the town center as, um, one of the options for transferring based on infill proximity, um, during that year.
Have they used that in other years?
That is the only year where transfers have happened. Um, and then also considering this year, um, I know I keep hearing transfers come up, but I'd just like to note that we are, applications are still open, so transfers aren't guaranteed. Um, and we still have not initiated that transfer process. So whether or not that will be an option this year is, is to be decided.
So, so I just, I think there's a couple of things. One, I, I strongly feel that the map needs to be modified, because I think we've gotten a lot of feedback on the map. And I think that, uh, that's something that I, no matter what, I'd like to just, I don't know if it merits an entire ballot measure by itself, if that's the only thing that goes forward, but I do think that the map is something that needs to be reformed. That's my feedback. I don't know what the, if there's consensus on that or not.
Certainly the map needs to be looked at. I just don't know, does it have to be, you know, through a ballot measure? I mean, it, it does?
It does, yeah. That, that's, that's, I think it's, we've set priorities with the LUP, and this would bring the measured, the new resolution, a new resolution would bring this into conformance with the LUP, which I think is a very good thing, because we don't want development in some of those areas.
So, I mean, um, I have no trouble with that map, the new one. The old one is, uh, uh, problematic. And I mean, there's a reason that the city council used it for transfers. So I don't really have a problem recommending it, but I, I don't know exactly what the city council would do with it. I don't know if I can do this, but I would like to move to recommend that the city council not place this measure on the ballot, though it might consider changing the downtown map, possibly through a ballot vote. That's, I guess that's my motion. Let's start with that.
I second the motion.
Can I just have a?
Okay, we could have a discussion. And I, I did notice also, Commissioner Riddick hit his hand up, and we might not have noticed that. And I just want to make sure that he's included in the discussion. Commissioner Riddick?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, Director Ikas, on, on more than one occasion, had been eloquent with the commission about the difficulties that the old, the current map presents. So whether or not tonight, we, whatever our recommendation is about the, the ballot measure, I'd suggest we, we consider two different motions, so we can, we can, uh, advise the council to, uh, put the map on the, uh, forward in a ballot measure, regardless of how the other decision goes.
I think that it makes sense to maybe separate them as well. I actually wanted to have a discussion, though. Uh, so I agree with Steve's point. I think maybe we, we have, potentially have two measures. I think there might be even a third recommendation for ballot measure, which might be, um, reform Measure D in a different way, which would be to do two things. One, if you apply for a Measure D and you don't use it, not only does it expire, you can apply for another one for another year, because you chose to not go forward with it. And, and, hang on a second. And that would be, would expand the number, it would be, that Measure D would be usable by other members of the public. So anybody else who comes forward, so it expands the number of projects that go forward. I think this is a specific example of, let's do something to actually address the problem, which is apparent. And I don't even know if it's true, because that second table we looked at, that we just put together, says actually, where you, the permits, permitted projects largely ma- map up, map up to, um, Measure Ds. But, you know, if there is in fact, an allocation problem, maybe one of the recommendations is you just, you recycle those Measure Ds and you put them back into circulation for the public. Uh, that could be a part of a, a, a project, but.
Can I hop in?
Yeah.
So I like that idea. And I think we might, we really, I'm not 100% certain we need a ballot measure to do that. We might be able to do that within the rankings. So that, and, and we, and we probably really need a study session to, to dive deep into the rankings and, and to improve production. And there are ways, I think, within that, without going through the effort of having a ballot measure.
So just if I could add, so Akoi, the, the way it's ranked with the criteria and the spreadsheets you have, you know, meaning the city has, it, it, those rankings and those criteria is in ordinance. You use the items that are in ordinance, and that's how you create your matrix and your rankings, correct? Because it, in, in the ordinance, it does say X number of points go to certain things, right?
Correct. The ordinance does have scoring criteria in it. Um, that was not, it was updated, um, in terms of interpretation, uh, in 2021, but it's still going off of, uh, that general points within the ordinance.
So it's the interpretation of the rankings that we need to look at? It's an interpretation of how, I, I, and I don't know how the city does this contest, whether they have a, a, um, task force that works with it within City Hall that has different people look at it independently and then get together and say, and come to agreement, and come to some kind of concurrence? I, I really don't know what the process is, and maybe there's something we can streamline there.
So, uh, the interpretations that were changed in 2021 were just changed in terms of how with ADUs were being looked at, because, um, a lot of the items on the checklist were unable to be applic- or were not applicable to a lot of these items, um, or had become required by some other, uh, state law. So a lot of those interpretations were only altered as a result of things like that. In terms of the, how score, Measure D is scored each year, um, staff goes individually through every single application. Uh, and then we have kind of a checks process for other staff to then verify, uh, any mistakes in there.
And there's things in there that say close to a center of worship. And then you, you get a score point, and then close to a grocery store. So, I mean, what's a center of worship? Is it the, you know, is it the major, major, you know, religious institutions that we have around town? Or there's tiny little, you know, places that, you know, there's Hindu temples that can be done in your house. There's, you know, a lot of these smaller groups that actually meet. And, you know, so I, I was just wondering how those are interpreted. Or the grocery store, not everybody shops at Safeway or at, you know, New Leaf. Some of them shop at these little grocery stores and markets that are closer to, you know, the downtown area or these little, you know, niche, you know, um, Latino markets or Asian markets or something like that. So I've just, those are the things that occurred to me is, you know, how is that interpreted?
So staff aims to be really consistent in their interpretations. Uh, we do have a list that, um, provides what should be within there. Um, and then we look at it based on a buffer. And so it's not just drawing a line and, and guessing. We are looking at a buffer and whether or not it's going to be located within that buffer. One other, sorry, I'm losing my train of, um, if, if anybody were to bring up, uh, concerns in regards to something that they think is applicable, staff will review that. And should that come up, we would review all the applications to consider that as a point as well. So, uh, we had a couple questions this year, and, and staff looked at those and, and decided whether or not those met that criteria. And so in years moving forward, it would be the same circumstance. If an applicant had a question about that, we would relook at all of the scoring and start the process again.
Through the chair. I'm, so I'm, I do believe that the things that Commissioner Hernandez raised can be treated administratively, I believe. Obviously, the map can't be. So in deference to Commissioner Ruddick, I don't know if it's possible to change my motion to two motions, because obviously you want to vote a different way on the first part of the motion and you want to vote a different way on the second part of the motion. Is that okay to do? Can I do that? Okay. So.
Do you want to just, do you just want to vote to deny the motion, putting on the City Council?
So there's, yeah, I guess there's two motions. One's to move that the City Council not place this measure on the ballot. And the second motion is the, the City Council, consider changing the downtown map, possibly through a ballot vote. Those are my two motions.
I think the ballot, about, for the second, why don't we do the first, yeah, why don't we do the first one?
First, first.
Maybe discuss the second one.
I would second the first motion.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Ruddick?
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Sure. It's a move to recommend that the City Council not place this measure on the ballot.
I vote no.
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Goran?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
No.
Vice Chair Johannes?
Yes.
And Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Okay. Motion approved to deny.
So then the second motion is to, excuse me, sorry, I'm a little tired. Is to ask the City Council to consider changing the downtown map in whatever way it can, possibly through a ballot vote.
It probably needs to be, I think.
So I, I just was wanting to say, so, so we're just asking them to consider not to place?
It's a recommendation.
Can I maybe make a slightly different, before we get a second? Could I make a proposal that we make a slightly different approach, which would be, just say, add a voter initiative unless, I would, I would word it as something along the lines of unless there is another way to change the map, we should put the new downtown map as a voter initiative on the ballot for, for November. That's how I might word it.
I would keep my motion. I, I think that the, it's a recommendation, sorry, but it's, it's not really up to me to tell the Council what to do. I would say that the, what I'm, what I'm recommending, what I would recommend with our first one is that they not put that ballot measure on the ballot because we don't have the data to support it. I would recommend that they consider this. I don't really have the data myself to, to sort of like tell them what to do. So I would just make a recommendation. Thanks.
I just want to be clear in what you're saying. So we're asking, this motion is to recommend to the City Council to consider placing a map, whatever it is, on the ballot?
No, the revised downtown map. Yeah, the revised downtown map, possibly on the ballot.
But possibly, meaning it's up to them to do that, of course?
Yes.
I will second that.
Well, can we discuss that for a moment before we vote?
Sure. Please.
Yeah, I, I think the spirit, the spirit of that is fine, but it seems awfully wishy-washy to recommend that they consider possibly doing it. I mean, it's important that, that the map be updated within Measure D. So I, I'd be in favor of your motion, Commissioner Goran, if it was a little more pointed there.
I understand.
I, I agree with that. I just, I mean, maybe the approach would be to strike the affordable housing and the Measure D from the resolution we have in front of us and just approve the change to the downtown map. That would be how I would suggest we, we do this. So we just take what staff's already put together and strike the affordable, the deed restriction, affordable housing and the Measure Ds, or sorry, the ADUs from that language. That might be the cleanest way to do it. Because my understanding is there's no other way to update the town map. We've already done the research. You know, there's no miracle that's going to show up. It's either fix the map by getting a voter initiative or do nothing. Those are the only two options in front of us that I see. I don't see any other, there's no magic wand they can wave. They can do something with allocations, but I don't think there's any magic wand that is all of a sudden going to get waived.
Well, I mean, they are using it now, a little. But, but I would say it doesn't really matter whether we say consider or, 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 you know, I don't even know what other word you want to consider, but we are asking them to consider changing the map, possibly through a ballot initiative.
Well, I think they're asking us, they're asking us for a recommendation, like, like, on, on what we're doing. Like a recommendation to me should just, I mean, there's no other way to do this other than a ballot measure. We've, I mean, am I wrong? Winter? There's no other way to change the map unless we do a ballot measure. Is that correct?
That's correct. Measure D refers to, defines the downtown area as the area designated as the downtown Half Moon Bay redevelopment survey area in City Resolution Number, and then it has, has the number. So the map was part of Measure D.
So, I mean, we should do our job and recommend a change to the map. That's my recommendation. So I agree with Commissioner Ruddick on this point.
And so consider is the word you don't like?
We should make a recommendation that we have a ballot measure that reforms the town map. That would be what, that would be what I would propose. So, and, and strike the affordable housing deed restrict, just take the existing resolution that we have, strike the affordable deed restriction language and strike the ADU language.
I'd be willing to do that. I want to know what the other commissioners think.
I, I don't know what I think.
Commissioner Ruddick?
Yes, I think, I think that's exactly what we need to do. As Commissioner Hernandez said, we recommend the Council that they, that they update the map to be consistent with the LUP map via a ballot measure. It's the only way to make that change.
I don't think it's actually that different, so, but I want to know what you think.
I understand the benefit of having it consistent with our LCLUP map, so, but I do in a way think that it's up for City Council to decide, you know? I, I mean, we looked at it, we say, I mean, there is maybe the concern that, you know, not all the landowners have been notified properly, so I don't know how we address that. So, you know, that's why, that's something they may wish to consider and we should give them that opportunity.
Well, I think we would if we, I mean, I'm just saying, let's make a recommendation. So are you in favor of making the recommendation that we put an updated map as a ballot measure? I guess that's, that's what I'm, I think Goran's asking.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's just recommend, it's, we're not deciding anything. We are recommending that the Council, I guess it's, it's either consider putting that on the, I really could consider.
Well, I mean, they would consider, but, yeah, it's just recommend, I mean, the map needs to be fixed. And the only vehicle we have to fix, I mean, look, and it's, this is not an insubstantial thing, like literally dozens of public outreach meetings, more than a dozen GPAC meetings, like multiple City Council meetings, we've discussed this. This has been discussed extensively for 10-plus years. So we know the map needs to be changed. City staff has done the analysis on it. If you disagree about the other things, there's at least one thing here that I think we can move forward with is just make a recommendation to update the map. That's a simple thing, but.
So I would, I'm sorry, Steve, but I'm going to stick with my original recommendation to recommend that the City Council consider changing the downtown map through a ballot vote. That's my motion.
That's fine. I'll second it.
It was seconded by Gossett, wasn't it? Ready? So it didn't change, so, okay. So Commissioner Ruddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Goran?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johannes?
Yes.
Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Through the chair, can I just make one comment?
Sure.
Part of my job is to make sure we recognize our staff for their incredible work and, not to put you on the spot, Akoi, but Akoi, you've been with us for how long?
Yes.
Two years, and this is her first planning job. And this is a very, very complex subject and it blows my mind how much she's mastered it. So I just wanted to publicly recognize her for that.
I do want to say thank you very, very much. You did an excellent job and you were very calm about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Akoi. Fine work.
Thank you all.
Well done. Okay, so we finished that. Our next item, I believe, is the Director's Report.
Thank you, Chair Gossett, members of the Planning Commission, and thank you, Akoi, for really great work. So tonight, I did want to mention one item and it's something that staff's working on. So at the last council meeting, you know, the Council approved the budget, the operating budget for the city, as well as the work programs for the departments. And one of the items for community development is something that I'm going to refer to as objective design standards for multifamily residential. So some of you are nodding because you've been following state legislation, which will potentially impact small areas of the city. And that is something in response to SB 423. SB 423 enacts SB 35 into the coastal areas. So what does that mean? It's streamlining of certain qualifying affordable housing projects. So it is narrowed somewhat, but it's still very important to the city. There's a few things I wanted to point out about it. It's not an agenda item, I just want to give you just really quickly. It provides a ministerial approval process for certain projects, removing the requirement of SEQA analysis, removing the requirement of discretionary, discretionary entitlements granted by the Planning Commission, and not requiring neighborhood noticing, for instance, some of a few things that would occur or not occur. Multifamily residential, what does that mean? That includes parcels zoned for multifamily housing. In our LUP, that's the high-density residential designations. It might be some other designations as well, yet to be determined. The, it includes mixed-use residential and non-residential uses. With mixed use, two-thirds of the square footage of those projects need to be residential. And it also includes transitional and supportive housing. The objective design process is really what I'm, I'm going toward here tonight and how are we going to go about doing that? We've been working on a RF, a request for proposal for consultant help because there's quite a bit of work to be done here. So there's the design standards, like design guidelines, but they're going to be objective and there's implementing zoning ordinance work that needs to occur. So with that, we'll be going through consultant selection. That'll be happening in the next month. And then the way staff's envisioning this is AAC, pretty heavy, heavily involved AAC site and site visits and workshops. So we'd like to bring them in, the consultants with AAC and walk them through some of these areas or all the areas that would be potentially impacted to get an idea of, you know, a flavor for, for our city and our neighborhoods in those areas. The Planning Commission, of course, is also a central part of putting this together, so I envision at least one workshop. I'm kind of hesitant to do multiple numbers of workshops because timing is of the essence. This is effective January 1st, so welcome your feedback individually if you'd like to talk to me about it. But those are the things I'm thinking of right now and that's what I've put, built into the, the program for the consultants to respond to. And all that would be done, of course, before a hearing, before the Planning Commission, so you'd have another shot at a, at a hearing, but there'd certainly be a workshop beforehand and then before, prior to the recommendation to the City Council for approval. So just letting you know, that's in process. The goal is to have it done by January, but, I mean, the goal is really to have it done as quickly but thoroughly and thoughtfully as possible. And that's, that's my report tonight.
Thank you. I'm so pleased to hear that you're working on that. It's, thank you. Do we have any?
I don't know if this is the proper place for it, but if we, if staff could consider some of the issues around bringing, bringing forward maybe even a group meeting with the City Council to kind of work out some administratively what we might be able to change about Measure D or about the process, you know, about the permitting and the ranking?
Rankings.
All of those kind of details to try to streamline and to help people get the Measure Ds if they can. Is that, thank you.
Yes, I think I, we heard quite a bit on that discussion, so I think we fully understand where you're going with that request. So something together with the Council at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner reports or?
Just glad to hear that we're getting, hopefully catch up with that. I think that's a great move. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, would someone like to put a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening.